At seven o'clock, please rise for pledge.
When we do go out in the United States of America and to the Republic versus the same one nation on the ground. He lives alone, but literally he's conducted the car.
Yeah, didn't I have this? Wait.
I think we have that. We were one other thing.
We were having technical all day. Good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, at this time for board by law, serious nine thousand, the board shall nominate officers of the Board of Education. At this point, yes, I will take nominations.
We'll see.
For first position would be for chairperson of the board.
I'd like to nominate Karen Broder to be the chair of the Board of Ed. I've only been with the Board of Ed for a couple of years, but Karen's been an amazing leader. The whole time that I've been a part of this organization and certainly led us during the during the hiring of Chris and bringing bringing you on as as our superintendent, and I think Karen would be the best person we've got to do the job.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane, for nominating me and Jack for your second. I appreciate appreciate your confidence and I accept the nomination. And I hope I have the support of my colleagues here on board. But before we go any further, I really need to acknowledge our past chair, the leadership of Kelly Kennedy, who you know, she really laid important groundwork for the district and you know, she she was instrumental in in and moving forward goals and brought even initiatives that Chris brought forth to us. So her leadership on several different occasions. She came back, she left, she came back, she was voted chair again. She was, I think, highly respected by everybody in this board. So I just really want to acknowledge her. I'm committed with working all of you to continue advancing the goals and and making sure that our focus remains with our decision making on always what's best for students. So thank you.
The other nominations. It will be voting by secret ballot. Now have secret ballots in your practice.
I don't know.
I didn't print those out.
Oh, I didn't.
Yes, we're about to be handing you some ballot. Because we're sorry, I'll question telling.
While we're waiting, I would welcome our two new board members, Jordan and Marykey. Thank you for being here and clearly it was a long campaign and you both worked really hard to earn that seat. So congratulations. And congratulations, congratulations to both Joe and Ailee, who were also reelected, barely the town.
And you're tending them.
Oh, yeah, that.
Clearly, the town very much appreciated the heart that you put in as board members because you were easily reelected. And y'all, we're still waiting. I'd also like to ask, I think everybody knows each other, but in case, since this is your first meeting, if you could just introduce yourselves. So we're board new board members, especially know who you all are. I know you know most of them, but just in case, Jack, you want to start?
Marykey, Jordan, Joe, Big Carewell. I'm Jack. Very nice to meet you again.
Hi there, I'm Karina Julius. Nice to meet you.
Hi, Karina.
Good evening, Jim Henderson. I've been on the board for, I think it's sixteen years now, Karen or Ailee could back me up on that, but it's been been a shrink. Sometimes it's challenging, but I think you'll find you'll continue to learn about the education process. You know, upward of what you already know now. So it's it'll be an eye opening experience, but I hope you enjoy your stay on the on the board.
You're coming. You know this guy.
Welcome. So glad to see you guys here.
I'm gonna have to answer, I feel like a newish. I'm actually reading.
Anything about that? The old name of the mission.
It's not. Oh, no, I nominated.
Do it. Well, you're going to get it, so I know. Still learning.
Every day. I've got two months on my job.
Two months?
Two months.
Oh, yeah, you were. It all counts.
Spence is killing you, huh? So by unanimous decision, congratulations, Board of Education Chair. Oh, boy. It's yours. Do you want to move? Here we go. Up in the world.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. Okay, so here we go. Carry on from here. Next vote is for the vice chair. So then we'll take nominations from the floor. Marykey.
I'd like to nominate myself for vice chair. I know I know some people better than others, but I I want to just highlight some of my experiences. I have a forty year career in education, twenty of those years in leadership positions. I've served on boards of directors for over twenty years and at least ten of those years as chair or vice chair of the Board of Directors. I've also consulted with boards, so I'm knowledgeable about what what makes a good a board effective. I think in terms of vice chair, and we all know the job description is very small. It says fill in for the chair when when she's not here. But what I'd like to add to that is I think in my experience being vice chair often makes one an extra pair of hands for the board and someone who's able to jump in, take on special projects. Do look into things, bring the information back to the for the good of the entire board, and I would hope to be able to serve in that capacity if I were elected. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to nominate myself for the position of vice chair and the first thing I would say is I have a tremendous amount of respect for Marykey already. We had a wonderful conversation last week, whichever, whatever, however, the board decides to vote. This board will be in excellent hands. I'm very confident we'll be moved forward very positively. I'm pursuing pursuing the position because I believe that there is value in having a parent of a current old saber public school student serving on the executive board. It may be simply a symbolic gesture. There's no true power necessarily in the vice chair position, but I think it's important to send that message to parents and the parents may receive that messages they have. Their their voice is being heard and respected by having a parent of a current student on the board. My responsibilities as a board member lie with the students and the parents. The parents and community members are the ones that elected me into this office, and it's for that reason that I'm doing this. And therefore, I'm putting my hat in the ring for the position of vice chair. So thank you for the consideration.
Good job.
Yells.
Thank you. We will now take nominations from the floor for anybody interested in the doing or secretary.
I'd like to nominate Jim Henderson to the position of secretary. Jim's been a member of the Board of Education for over fifteen years. But he's demonstrated himself to be a very conscientious, articulate and solid member of the Board of Education, who's been involved in many of the committees that we have, and he has a way of really understanding the issues and approaching them with objectivity and respect. And I think that he would be a fine representative as a secretary for the Board of Education.
Thank you. Your second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting for some of the second. That's not necessary. Okay, I'll second it. I thank you for that heartfelt speech. I appreciate that. As you know, I've been a member of the board for over fifteen years. I've held a different positions of responsibility, not the executive for it, but regularly attend. I'm not one of those people that tends to miss one of these meetings unless it's absolutely necessary for business requirements. I should mention, I've also been on the Board of Parks and Recreation for twenty years, just got off that. But I served for ten years as secretary of that committee. And recent in the recent term, I was the vice chairman of that committee. So I have a lot of experience on that front and realize the responsibility that goes along with this in terms of formulating the agenda with the help of the superintendent and the chairman. And also the, the minutes as well as taking in and distributing all the correspondence that comes to the board. But the board too, working with all you on that.
Anybody else pressing interest? It's a lovely position. To help them many years. All right. Congratulations, Jim.
Secretary.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Congratulations. The next thing we're gonna do is is the committee assignments. Is everybody home?
Thank you very much.
So where it's.
The secretary gives the turn of authority. Sorry.
Anybody else needs?
All right. So this is the time always after elections that we'll just visit the policy committees. And give the opportunity for existing members to change committees and new members to share their interests and what they'd like to serve on. We have four standing committees, and they are budget, fiscal, policy, personnel, and facilities, so those are the first ones we're gonna talk about. So if the current chair could give a brief overview of, of the work that's entailed and responsibilities, I appreciate it. So everybody can understand what responsibility is. So starting with budget and fiscal, Karina, you were the current chair. Yes, just a little overview, please.
Yeah, so obviously budget and fiscal is pretty self-explanatory. We review the budget as presented by the superintendent, we meet several times. We are about to get into the busy season of, of that committee. And it, it really runs through February, through, excuse me, through January. When the, there's a series of things that happen. We review the, the budget presented by the superintendent, we come to agreement on it, and then it's brought to the board to become the board's budget. And then that board's budget is brought before the finance committee to review and approve. I think that's what happens.
For finance.
The board of finance, yes. Board of finance, and then it goes to the town vote. So it's really pretty heavy from we haven't had our first meeting yet, but imminently. And then through, through January, so it's that's our busy season. And that's really all there is to say. So certain committees meet consistently throughout the year, and others have their targeted times, like, like budget dies. So, right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so right now we've got Karina, Eileen, and Jim on the committee, does anybody, does anybody want to switch? Does anybody like to get on it? We usually have between two and three board members in addition to the chair. And you can't really do any more than that, because it can become a quorum. So don't all jump at once.
I'm, I'm interested in finance.
Just, I'm currently on that committee, but I could step down if somebody else would like to do that, because I have an interest in another committee.
Okay.
So I could stand, but I don't want to stand on anybody else's, but if they're interested in budget, fiscal.
We can always kind of revisit. So all righty then. Let's move on to policy. So we'll figure it, we'll come back with the chairs, I just want to make sure, you know, if we all, we're all settled in terms of membership might change as we, as we've talked about the other committees. Eileen, do you want to give an overview of the policy?
I will, please. So I've been chair for, for many years, and part of the responsibility is in Board of Education is to adopt policy. And we usually look at the decisions that are made in the legislature. And they come down to the various towns and cities. And we, and I usually, maybe the superintendent doesn't talk about some of the impact of some of those policies and regulations. And then we bring what we think is specific to Old Saver, to the Board of Education for a first reading. And then during the first and second reading, we get input. It's available, so it goes out to perhaps if it's specific, it goes out teachers, could go up to staff, could go up to administration, and then it comes back for a second reading and adoption. I consider policy a lot like curriculum. And so there's things that will, you know, impact, you know, with various aspects, could be health, could be management of facilities, there are many things that come down.
Thank you. So right now we've got Jack and Jim currently on the committee. Policy's a big one, that is one that typically I think meets more or less consistently throughout the year. When we, superintendent, and then they let us know, because sometimes we don't want to overlook the committee, but we make sure we have a deadline. Sometimes, sometimes they've been, you know, recommended a year, like last summer. And so the, right now this committee needs to take a look at some of the other policies that are have been sort of in the network, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to remain on that, if possible.
Great, thank you.
I would join that committee.
I'm also interested in policy.
So, and Jim, would you like to stand on policy?
Right, I think that's great, committee, I'd love to stand.
Five. We can't have five.
Yeah, maybe we'll look at some of the other committees before we decide.
Yeah, that makes a quorum, so we're going to revisit policy, we're gonna move right on to personnel, and that would be me, I've been sharing that.
So, right now, I have policy, so that I am.
Yeah. Sure, yeah, you are. So Personnel Committee, so Personnel Committee is despite the fact that we have a committee of several board members, it it really is like a committee one, to be perfectly honest, and that's the chair. And I'll tell you why, because it's primarily the role is is organizing and planning for the eventual summative evaluation of the superintendent. Other than that, a committee would be called together if there was, for example, a grievance, which we have never had. So there hasn't been a reason to call a committee. And that's the only other reason I would, that there's not been a need to call the committee meeting. So the role of the chair, whoever's willing to take that on. But we, as you know, we have a full year timeline, the board self-evaluation and evaluation of the superintendent. So we have twice a year a board leadership evaluation meeting, so it's sort of coordinating that, getting feedback from all the board members. And then we've got the Q and A coming up, preparing for that in March with the superintendent, and, and just keeping everybody on schedule for the summative, which happens in May, taking everybody's evaluation, writing that one summary document, running that meeting. It, it is a lot of work, I'm not gonna be, you know, I'm not gonna gloss that one over. But at any rate, so right now we've got Jack and Jane on the committee.
Also certainly, he's on Board for Higher Administration.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Forget spending all summer.
All the administration, the board does not hire teachers, we hire administration. And, yeah, we have very active hiring season, so I was doing it on for, for hiring as part of the interview process. Hopefully that'll quiet down. Okay, so I still would like a committee. We've got Jane and Jack at the moment. Karina? Facilities, so Steve was our chair. Can you give us for some overview of facilities?
Sure.
Please.
So the facilities committee will meet regularly and often discuss matters related to the upkeep and maintenance of our physical plants and facilities. Including but not limited to things as we bought a new lawnmower, or we have to replace a boiler or anything along both lines with the physical structure within, within the district. They're also, the facilities committee will also talk about will provide updates with things such as regulation requirements for like green cleaning a school and things along those lines. Some of the safety protocols that we go through the facility.
Just, just one comment is Pam's very much involved with that, so she, she's always at those meetings and tends to, you know, kind of be a defect, not de facto chair, but yeah, we, we defer to Pam a lot, obviously, yeah.
I'd be interested in joining that committee.
Thank you very much.
Same. I'm sorry, I would like to.
Jordan?
That's probably my area of strength and experience, I built the high school. And, and I was on it, but never got a meeting, so I'd like to stay on.
Okay. So that, I think, I think that covers facilities.
I, I think, I enjoy being on the committee, but if I don't want to stand in the way of, if somebody else wanted to.
We're here right now at four. Max. Thank you, we're gonna revisit that. So going back to budget, which are budget, we have Karina, Eileen, and would you like to say a budget? Okay, given the clarity. Perfect, and chairman, interested in being the chair of that committee.
I'm interested in continuing.
Continuing with that? Okay. Sounds like a plan. Yep, policy, that's the one we have to, somebody's got to say not interested. We have Eileen, Jim, Jack, Jordan, and Merrick right now. Too many, that's a quorum. So all right.
We also try and balance it with Democrat versus Republican. Not, not that that matters, but I don't know that, that there's a rule on that.
No, there isn't, I don't think that really counters its interest.
I do think this is one committee where we do need to be considerate of that, though, because there could be
okay, th- this is an area where there may be differing perspectives. That's.
A second minute, there's, there's topics that come up that are a little bit on the fence, and we need to look at a balance there.
Okay, so we are heavy Democrat.
Should we also consider number of committees total per person? Having one on three out of the four?
But Jordan, you're on two. Eileen's on two. Everybody's kind of you guys.
Could Eileen be a, Eileen, since you've been on this committee for such a long time, could you be more of a what do you call it, not a mentor?
Consultant.
Consultant, would that, would that be something that you would feel comfortable doing, or?
I would do that, but also like sit as committee member, if that's possible.
What, like a, what do you call, like a past president?
I mean.
That is a possibility.
I, I think that, that's the challenge.
You don't got too many people as members.
The problem we have right now is that, I mean, you have served and, and you've done a wonderful job serving, but we've got new interest. And everybody else seems very interested in serving on this committee. So can you consider, please, stepping down from this committee?
You can still participate in meetings, you just wouldn't be able to vote, you can go to the meetings, well, could she even go?
Yeah, in hopes that a forum may be in attendance.
Okay. It's gotta be considerate of it. Yeah.
Yeah. And for those of you, that's a problem, though. I'm sorry. For those of you who knew. That's a problem.
Because then that's an official board meeting, if there's a quorum of board members in any other given meeting, it's an official meeting, and there, it hasn't been.
It has to be posted as a board meeting.
Reported and all. You have members of the board together.
Well, why is that a bad thing? So if there's five people who want to do it, and there's enough work to go around?
Because then it's a board meeting.
Because they need any, because it's. No, because, because you, you don't have, want to have to make it a public meeting to get, you know, basic, you know, behind the scenes, not, not behind the scenes, but, you know, work that you're trying to get done. It, it makes it more laborious, and we're, you know, we're already having two meetings a month that are public meetings. It's no longer a committee. Yeah.
You've lost the committee status.
Yeah. But that's, and that's, that's not a law of our board, that's the law of the state.
Yeah. Robert's wrong. Okay, if, if nobody's willing to step down, I'm gonna have to just appoint a committee, and I, I hate to do this.
I don't mind stepping down, I just wanted to be part of that committee, but it sounds like the discussion is, you know, maybe you can't be part of it, can you? Because there's too many people on it. Or listen to the conversation, or.
I don't see it if you have five members.
I, I, we just, I don't see how that can work. I, I don't see how that can work.
Alternate, so.
Yeah, that's that's which, which often does happen, you often don't get a full.
So if, if we have four members on, on any committee, and the chair decides to come to that committee meeting, is that also?
That's the cap, no, the chair.
The chair does have, okay. Just want to make sure.
Nope.
But you don't have a vote?
No.
I don't know that there's a vote.
There's not, not a form. Yeah. Everybody's holding firm here.
No, I don't want to step down, I'm just about, but there's my favorite, that, I mean, you know, can we sit in and listen in?
I'm gonna appoint Merrick, Jordan, Jack, and James for this committee. Sorry, it just, there's nobody that's willing to step down. All right. Who would want to step up as chair? Merrick?
Okay.
I'll say, that, you interested? You interested in chair?
I, I certainly would be interested, but I feel that I can work well enough with Merrick that the reason for our votes.
Thank you, Jack, right, Merrick. Chair of this thing. Thank you, everybody. Are you gonna move on to personnel? We've got Jack, Karina, James. The other thing I wanted to add about personnel was, I was thinking of another sort of was looking at our, it's gotta be at least ten years ago that, that George and I put together the handbook. I think it probably needs a look over, and maybe a little tweaking here and there, so that's something that this, this person should probably take a look at. Perhaps be combined into a orientation packet, I think there's a lot of information already in there, just throwing it out there. Anyway, who would like to chair personnel? Anyway, who would like to chair personnel? Would like to write. A lot.
Scaring hard at Jack and he's not.
Karina? All right.
So you got a pre on that, you need a fourth?
Yeah, no, because that's one of those committees that you just don't need.
Just offering, yep.
Thank you, you just. As I said, it's pretty much a committee one right now. Thank you, Karina. All right, onto facilities, we have Jane, Joe, Jim, and Jordan. So right now we have.
Your name starts with a J.
Who would like to?
Shouldn't Jack be on?
Chair? That committee. Jane, Joe, Jim, and Jordan.
I'll step forward.
Jim. Great, thank you very much, appreciate that.
I have I have a question, and that is um. Yeah, with respect to. Jane serving as selectman and the conflict of interest that creates as a board member. How is that going to be resolved?
Uh. What conflict of interest uh do you see with the Board of Selectmen?
Well, the Board of Selectmen votes on things associated with the Board of Education, the Board of Education. Makes decisions around things that are gonna affect. It it it's it's difficult to know. Um, and this isn't just me, I've had several constituents approach me and be concerned about the uh. The the conflict of interest, when when I was first brought onto the board with. Another board member, we were told to step away from any school-related activities because of perceived. Influence that being a board member in a parent-led organization might have. So I contrast that with the perceived. Number one, the the the. Conflict of interest. And also the perceived influence as a selectman um in any discussions, and I and I I don't think that it would be appropriate. To participate in the Personnel Committee. Um, or even facilities where financial decisions are made that you would then have to vote on as a selectman. And. Uh, it it, you know, I'm I'm just interested in understanding how you're gonna resolve that, um, because I think that puts a burden on the board. I think there are times when you would not be able to vote. And then that puts a burden on the board to determine. To keep track of when that is, and then I would also expect that as a selectman, there would be times that you wouldn't be eligible to vote. So it's a concern that I have.
Yeah, I, the Board of Selectmen uh doesn't. Uh, move the the Board of Education budget through, that's the Board of Finance.
But you participate in the Board of Finance and you have, you you. Uh, have dialogue with Board of Finance.
But that's not moving it through, that's not a vote. That's not voting.
There's influence. It, I I just.
I I I I don't, there's nothing in the charter, there's other uh, there's other, you know, and you know, there's a, there's a first selectmen, the first selectmen is on the Board of Education. Or the regional school there. Um, so there are other.
They may operate differently than we do, I can't speak to that, but if we need policy to dictate integrity and the right thing to do, then that's a different issue.
Okay, can you think of a situation where we've had a vote or a a occurrence that that that's come, I mean. We can sit here and say there might be at some point a potential conflict of interest, and that would be true if if, you know. Based uh on on some where. Where somebody works, like, for example, you know, we've had a situation where our facilities director has had to, you know. Step away, and if, I think, same thing, you know, if. In the unusual situation that uh something would come up, that may be a conflict. Um, you know, I certainly can um can back away, whether it's a selectman issue or a Board of Ed issue. Um, I don't perceive that being a problem. And I can't think of any of an example where. On the two years that I've served here, that I would have had to. Uh, recuse myself. Uh, on any vote that I've done.
But the conflict of interest didn't exist in the past two years, and so now it's something that is.
Right, I can't think of anything.
And that perceived influence, you know, like if it if it existed as a board member in a parent-led group, I can't imagine that that's. More more sensitive than a select person on the Board of Ed.
Oh, I I.
I just wanted to go on record as saying that, people have approached me, there are members of this board who have agreed that that is a problem. So I just think it's um important now that the. Chair and other board members need to monitor when that uh might be an issue. It's just a burden we need to bear.
Well, I I don't, I maybe I'm taking light of it, but I don't see how that, I can't think of any situation that would have occurred in the two years that I've served as a board member. Um, for the Board of Education, that would have put me in an in an uncomfortable situation.
You won't be able to vote on the budget. As a board member.
Why not?
Because, well, I don't want to get into the details of it here, I just raised the issue, it's on record, and I think it's something that the board needs to consider going forward.
And the the. The Board of Ed budget goes through the Board of Finance and then is voted on by the town. Um, and uh, you know, I was elected uh as a Board of Education member.
But the conflict of interest didn't exist when you were elected as a Board of Education member.
Elected as a uh selectman and. Um, you know, I knocked on a lot of doors and uh certainly, you know, let everybody know that I was gonna be excited that I would be able to serve as. Both the Board of Education member and uh Board of Selectmen, and there's nothing in the charter that precludes that.
That's correct, there is nothing. And again, if we need policy to dictate. Then that's an issue, but.
And well, and I I hope that.
Yeah, we're gonna move on from this, but thank you. Set your piece. Um, if we could get back to the finish, please, we're moving on to ad hoc committees. So that you tend to an ad hoc committee is a short term for specific purpose, and I think a lot of these we have, it has served their purpose, and we're going to now be able to eliminate them. Um, strategic planning. Correct me, if anybody has any other opinions, I think. We don't need that as standing as a as a ad hoc committee anymore, uh strategic planning has taken a different um approach, it's worked well, uh. We know a lot of people that is anything. Agreed? Okay.
Apparently, has the strategic plan gone out for public comment for parents? Students, whoever? Does he resist you with the five year plans?
Still means about, we're still, we're still in the middle of it, so not yet.
And we, so that we don't need a committee, even though it's not done?
No, it's it's all board, it's all, it's all in the hands of us, so. Okay. A turf field committee, clearly, we don't need that anymore. Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. Demographics. Karina, you chaired that, that. That was.
We got just a few times, and it was related to the uh. Student population, demographics of the town, enrollment, and you know, and identifying any solutions, but we haven't, you haven't met for a while, and I don't know, you know, what good to Chris, that was. Something that was a value.
I haven't been that since I've been here, but.
Yeah, no. I mean, I think that's something probably we can address as a board, and if there's an issue that needs to be addressed.
I'm sure we actually need a committee for that.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think um, any other thoughts on? On uh. Ad hoc committees?
Yeah, I have two I'd like to.
True, okay.
Um, one is related to communications with parents, I think that was a. Is a very common issue that I've experienced and also heard as a parent, and so I think we need to draw some specific attention to that for this year.
Yes, I'm. In favor of that as well. Parental communication ad hoc, one to develop some ideas. Potentially come to the board.
Okay.
For approval.
So it would be specifically with. Parents in the community, just your specifically.
I was saying, general, so maybe it's the ocean in general.
Vision.
Yeah, I I often, I I thought a little bit about exactly what term to call it, and. Communication might be a little too vague. Um, yes, the focus, I think. Um. Would be parents winter.
That's one of them, also things like, I think we should be able to have an email distribution list for agendas for when we meet. Instead of having to always go to find the website, we can have a list serve like the town does for all of their orgs. Um, I also think we need to do a better job of talking about the wonderful things that the school district does and. Get that out in the community more.
So. I'm glad, sorry. Uh Superintendent Drazek, is that, so I'm hearing, and I I've done a lot of work in this area, so I I I'm with you, but is that, that sounds like some overlap to. The work of your new. Boys across the parking lot, right?
Uh, there could be some overlap there, yeah. Okay, but. I I have, but I want to make sure I'm understanding the. The parent piece of it, is it just more like increasing the information that gets out to parents, or like, how many parents?
No.
We we would be sending any information to parents, isn't my thought, it's more about our outreach to parents, the the. Similarity I would draw to something that Kelly brought to our attention that used to be liaisons that went to different, the different schools. To sit down essentially parent meetings and bring that information to the board, looking for a more direct. Um, line of communication from the parents to the board. So, and now. First, all of this would happen. With. You, you know, having some conversation with you as to any, you know, uh limitations or anything else that we're not. Crossing paths, but it's not about communicating. To parents, I mean, there's the. It's it's more about getting. Information from parents, bringing it to the board. And that would be, you know, one example, like I said, was what Kelly did, the idea is that that there have been. You know, some. Some suggestions, some ideas thrown out at different board meetings, and the in the ad hoc process allows us, an environment to have that conversation and see what comes out of it. I I personally would welcome other perspectives. In with the group, because as many different perspectives and ideas we can have, um, I think it can. Help us to become better and uh implement some change within business that we do.
Great, so I have two thoughts, one is it might be an opportunity to reinstate those liaisons with the PTAs, PTOs.
The schools.
Yeah, um, that would be my proposed recommendation, um. Because just given the newness of this board, I think that. Um. We're. I'd rather, I'd rather see if we reestablish those liaisons and if that's giving the board what it needs as far as. Information, rather than establishing a committee and not really having. The the full. Gap and um. Kind of discretion fully fleshed out, and so, so my other. Recommendation would be, let's have some runtime as a board, I think that there is the opportunity um. To get board, new board members trained in understanding our role and responsibilities, and the and the. And the breakdown of responsibilities between our superintendent um. And Trent and Jeff, and how that all works together.
Yeah, I'm gonna respectfully disagree as a parent of a student, communication, the two and a half years that I've been a parent of, good one, it has not been great. And parents feel like things are happening to them rather than being part of the society.
So I think that that's a conversation with the superintendent and not, it's, that's not the board's responsibility to communicate with the parents.
We're not sending communication.
It is, it is, it is important information for the superintendent to be aware of and ensure that. Proper communication channels are being used. All that, there's an opportunity for improvement there, and I think that Jeff and Trent, if if they're part of that. You know, excuse me, they can help in solution in new creative ways, I I just think it's premature tonight. To say, because we have to remember, while while I think that there's value in in parents. Um, being members of the board. When you are a member of the board, the hat that you wear first is a board member and second is a parent. And um, that's why I just think it's an opportunity to have some runtime and some um. Under, I think it'll be important on the tenth, when we meet with um the attorney, to really understand roles and responsibilities and how best to. Solution for the problem that that exists, I just think having, you know, establishing a committee tonight might be premature, do we need to run two years?
Yeah, I also disagree. I also disagree with you, respectfully disagree with you, Karina, um, I think. If we need to. I don't know what the word is, um, I want to say engage, but um, parents. I I've spoken to enough parents that the frustration lies that the board is not representing them as well as it could. We need to be able to engage in conversations outside of this forum to see if there are ideas for positive change. Now, that would all have to be done within the confines of our roles, would all have to be done within respect to what Superintendent Drizik does. And the other roles that he has, but I don't think it's any. Members' decision that they could say, no, that we can. Have a committee where we have conversations about how can we become better? And any decisions that we make would have to, well. Speaking, we wouldn't be making decisions, that's the wrong word, but. The communications that we, the information we receive from parents would be reported out to the board.
How would you receive information?
They they, that would be the first conversation. To be had, would, what exactly is this, how do, what would it look like, you know, my first thought is what Kelly had suggested. Idea of sitting in on those meetings and bringing that information back to the board.
So what we, so what we had in place, what we had in place for many years was a liaison list, so we had liaisons for the PTOs, we had liaisons for each school. With the um recommendation or the encouragement to attend as many functions that school held as you could, it didn't prohibit any other. Board member from obviously attending, the the, you know, the more visibility we have as board members. Better it is. And and that seemed to work really well, I'm not exactly sure how it kind of fell by the wayside, I don't really. Know how that all fizzled out, but um. But we did for years, and it did work really well, so when you're going as a parent, as a, sorry, as a board member to a PTO meeting, you're getting all that feedback. Um, and then we would get reports back. And um. Yeah, it just seems a little, I I see where we're going, it seems a little. The um. Charge seems a little vague right now to me, I I I know what you're saying. Um, we would need. Couple of people on, willing to serve on a committee, and of course, the superintendent serves on all of these committees, I think the other issue is we. I I think we all, as full board, need to hear more from Jeff. And Trent, because this is a new role that they've taken on, soul communication, operations and all of that, and um. They've, we've touched upon it with us, but we need um, take more in-depth. Uh, feedback from them.
I do, I'll just say my piece, and I think this is gonna be another message to parents that we don't want to hear what they have to say.
So, let me finish.
That is the message that I would hear.
So that being said. I hear you, I hear your concerns, I know there has been a lot. Of feedback, especially on the campaign trail, from. Sort of discontent with with parents and lack of communication or the perception of, so. If you're willing to form a committee. Form the committee. And you need to have a clear charge, what your intent is, what your process is. What your research will be, all of that, but I I'm not gonna, not gonna discourage you. Out of this energy, so it's all for for a good, for a good reason.
Thank you.
So, I don't know what you want to call it, um, it's not communication with parents, it's not a name.
Yeah, may I add, it almost sounds like we're. The subject is kind of board community relations or. Public, you know, it it's, it's not communication exactly, that's part of it, but it sounds like it's more part of. How the community, including parents, perceive the board's openness and responsiveness, right, which. You can tackle that in a number of ways, I've I, I'm for the liaison program too, I think it makes a lot of sense to put that back in place, I personally. Would really like to be out, you know, be assigned to a school and or a PTO that I could go be part of. Um, and I hope everybody else feels that way too, you're much more busy.
So, Jack and Jordan. Taking into consideration the comments, um. Perhaps. PR would be more appropriate.
Yeah, how about, how about this, George and I, how about we'll speak and we'll touch base at some pay point, Chris?
Sure.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Um and we'll put something more formal together.
That would be great.
A more formal, um maybe we'll get the the parameters in terms of. Um what it is that we need to.
Yeah.
Explain to the board and the board, so it's not fight is buried.
That would be great.
With Trent and Jeff too, understanding what they're doing. We can coordinate with Jeff and Trent to understand what they're doing to make sure we're not slipping any door.
I think I was wondering because the liaisons that I remember many years ago. Maybe that role has changed, but it's you chose the school that you really wanted to be part of, but. When you don't have children in there, then I rely just on reminders, you know, because that lets me know what's going on in each of the schools. Um I'm just saying, but it's there. Um and I remember being ethically as unto the high school at that time. Um like it was important for this ability, it was also about your interest, you know, in grade levels, so. Sometimes when they see you at a at a function, they don't necessarily associate, anyway, you're supposed to be the board member, but. You're also going to this.
So is it the sense of this board that we would like to bring back the liaison roles to the schools and PTOs?
Yes.
Sorry?
You can also do that from there as well.
Yeah, it's it's. Okay.
At the high school level, there is not really a functional.
PTO.
So it's gonna have to uh look a little different.
Yeah. So, okay, so let's start with Goodwin. So um so we would have to be kept very well informed of 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 meetings. Um and it can be certain word, I heard here, we don't have to, and this is a this is a very kind of likes.
Be interested. I make the most sense for Goodwin, I'm assuming on this. I'm happy to do it. I'll take Mary with me.
I'm interested in Goodwin.
Uh middle school? Just in schools.
Myself as well.
Is there room for somebody else to get together?
Absolutely.
Just supposed to be out there for things that are going on across the district.
Yeah, and then PTO representation, I I think um it's probably strongest at the. Goodwin level, but so it it can be a separate liaison or you can just all, maybe we just keep it.
It should be one one in.
All all activities and programs, perfect. All right.
Let me think, Karen, I think maybe Karina said it, it's a um if I'm correct, roles and responsibilities. Don't want to put so much pressure on school board members to be the conduit to the board, that's. I I mean, I, as long as I've been on this board, we've never had anybody go to the meetings um.
We've had people go to PTO meetings.
I'm just saying that I have at the time. But so their role is what, what so that's a role of responsibility, maybe when it comes to talk about it because. I know what does that really mean? You're going to go sit in and you're going to listen, but you're not going to listen to maybe a certain set of, you know, parents, but where do you take it? You know, and I think sometimes they think that, you know, the Board of Education may have more power than, you know, uh that it does, and they would have to. Really address this with administration.
Okay, thank you. Um all right, guys, flip to the next page. Let's just cover quickly the negotiations. So that is again something that does not happen frequently. It is um. A teacher does one every three years, every three years um. There's nurses, there's fair educators, secretaries, uh superintendent and other administrators, so. Um again, I'm looking for uh. I think the superintendent having Karina here on it, which is great um. It'd be great, bunch bunch of people are usually finance people are usually good on that one, I think I'll just jump on in there, so Mary Keith. Okay, and Jim? Interested in staying on the superintendent contract negotiations?
Certainly.
Committee, okay, um as far as custodians, Jim, you're on it. I was on it. I just need.
Whatever you whatever you need me to do.
All right, nurses, right now Jane, you're on it. It's um. Again, I don't know how frequently that contract rolls around. We've got nurses, we've got pairs and we have secretaries. And anybody.
I'm happy to do nurses.
I'm happy to stay where I am.
Okay.
You're on quite a few of these, Karen.
Yeah, I value more. Okay, you're on secretaries and I do need somebody for pairs, which is really. A very easy group to to work with.
Sure.
Jordan?
Got it.
Eye contact, I mean eye contact. Okay, we're we're good, we're good.
Am I doing that for me or are you?
I I would like to.
This the one for Paris?
Paris.
I I can do that. It doesn't come out very much.
It really doesn't. I need um somebody else. Um nurses, please, and somebody else on secretaries.
You have Jane in there.
You already are nurses.
Yeah, Jane. Okay, oh Jane is on there, okay. Uh Jane's on secretaries, I could use a free hand on that one. Yeah, well, I'd like to get a name in here and I'm looking at.
Jim? What was category this time, or sure?
Secretaries. It's not gonna happen for a while.
Chris, you and she using.
It's um. We just did it, so you don't have to worry about for a while. Thank you very much. We're we're good.
And teachers was just.
There are good jobs, build us all in, invest all of this. Oh my gosh, we're not done. Teachers, teachers.
That was just done, so we we got a little up.
Yeah.
I would just leave the three of us on there.
Jeff, Jim, Jane. Unless anybody else is interested. We've got non-bargaining unit employees.
How many of those do you have, Watson?
Not including the nurses, which would be another.
Yeah, that's.
They're not, they're not, okay.
So this would be, this would include, who, this would be um um like cafeteria.
Uh cafeteria. Custodians are.
Okay. Um I could use one more name on that one. And again, this doesn't happen often.
Or like I said, wherever you need, it's fine.
Okay, now the special committee is the calendar committee. Uh right now, Jane and Karina are on that one. We could potentially use one more if anybody's interested. The calendar is barely set. Um.
It really led by.
Pam leads this a lot. We try to align our calendar with surrounding town, so vacations are. Falling on the same weeks uh as other districts around us um.
We did a lot of work to try and change some things around and years ago, I I I doubt we try and recreate that. Yeah, I think it'll be a little more streamlined.
Yeah.
Next time.
It's. Feedback is always welcome.
Karen, I'll put my name.
Uh Kate Liaison, Eileen, you have done that. For a long time, would you like to continue in that role? Okay, uh the Learn Liaison, that's that was a tough because they meet.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend Mary. We we discussed that.
And it meets during the day, so for anybody working, it's it's.
It's really tough.
So, okay, that'll be great, because that's an important one. And then uh and the ASK is not a liaison. Anymore, eliminating that one right off the bat.
I think they just want the board under that, you know, we just listen to the response where.
Thank you, thank you for volunteering, um really appreciate that. Right, yeah, we yeah, we just finished the ASK, so it's gonna be quiet for ten years. We're just working on their recommendations on that, so. Five to five years.
They start sooner. But I'll be able to fill you in because I'm. Not yet, but. Coming up for us, yeah.
All right, you can give us a heads up on that one. Well, that was fun. Thank you, everybody, for for volunteering. I really appreciate it. Okay, we're moving on to audience of citizens before I go through the process of recommitment, reading the conduct. Is I I see some audience members, anybody willing to speak tonight? Okay, since there are two people, uh what I want, I mean, first of all, thank the. Being patient and and uh sitting through this process. Um so um we welcome you and we do pay close attention to uh public comments. But the board does not respond to you, to your specific questions during the course of this public address. Um although we may add the topic to a future agenda at a later time, uh we may ask for clarification. Of a specific question we're issuing and um the board chair or uh the superintendent um. They respond on behalf of the Board of Education if there's something very clear and simple, other otherwise, there will be follow-up. Uh identify yourself, please, by name and address, so we can get back to you. Uh we've got three minutes um. Certainly no voiceless conduct, and the important thing is here is that you cannot discuss specific employees. Of the Board of Education, whether they are identified by name or by any other reference. Um that being said, Jim, I'm going to ask you to have a phone.
Or do.
To be your timekeeper, please. And Amy, would you like to start?
Okay, thank you. Name's Amy Ray, well, it's a book. Um I'm going to start by congratulating the new board members. And wish them all on their leadership endeavors. And thank you board for being here two days before Thanksgiving. That's very admirable, so thank you for your service. Um I'm here as a parent of a good one child and was among the many who took issue with the abrupt and covert removal of classroom pets in September. Like many parents, I advocated strenuously for the return. I think I speak for many good one parents when I say that we are happy to see the pet policy on the meeting agenda tonight. Thank you, uh because we have been closely watching the timeline that got us to this moment. We understood that the matter was being addressed with some urgency. But there have been no public progress with FOIA or communications on the matter since the fourth ed, we do on fourteen. Meanwhile, the kids really miss their pets. Um I look forward to any updates that are shared tonight, although. I stuck out to get started at my pipe crusts, um but uh thank you then for taking our consent seriously.
Thank you. Mister Retinari, before you say anything.
My name is Chris Retinari.
Excuse me, excuse me. I realize you've spoken to us on several occasions, multiple occasions on this one topic. Um the former chair. Has sent you um. Some communications and most recently you've received another communication from our former chair.
When would that have been?
Um. She indicated that we would not be further discussing this topic anymore at these board meetings. You have, I don't know the date of that last communication.
What was the last board meeting that I was at was was the day she did it, right, at seven, like seven again. Uh as I was speaking, because she knew that I was going to come and speak again. So uh whether you're going to say something or not, you're going to eventually have to deal with it, and I'd like to talk to the guys that are right here, cameras.
Mister Retinari.
That I'd like to say.
Mister Retinari. Quite finished because you have violated our code of conduct policy multiple times when you've addressed us.
Your code of conduct is unconstitutional.
In terms.
Two-point discretionary.
Excuse me, in terms of. Mentioning.
Yes, two-point discretionary.
Mentioning a staff member. On several occasions.
That's your feeling, I understand that's your stuff, but that has been ruled on by federal courts.
Your right to speak and address us has been terminated. You're done. We have, we have, we have.
My right to speak in the First Amendment.
You're 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 done. You're done. We have addressed this. We have communicated with you multiple times.
Actually have not. There's new, there's a new board here, and I'd like to uh just say to them, hey. You know, if you really care about parents and you really care about transparency and you really care about those things you say you do. I don't think it's really appropriate for teachers to be able to cheat students, for them to lie to students.
You're you're done.
I'm sorry, I'm I'm I have the right to speak?
No.
Yes, I do.
No, you've lost your right to speak.
Calm, it's calm.
You have lost your right to speak because you have.
I don't.
Identified staff members.
When did I do that?
Just about every time you have addressed us, not by name, but as we have said by other identifying factors.
Um did I say anything to? Did you remove at those point, at those at those uh at those places? No, you did not.
I was not the chair. I'm now the chair.
Past meetings are past meetings, this is this meeting. I have, I can't lose my right to speak, it's my First Amendment right. So I just want to say, I have it on tape, that these teachers cheated my daughter. It's fine, and I'm gonna leave you, Chris. Here's that hard drive for the FOIA that I've been waiting for since February. Now there's no excuse. If you'd like to. If you'd like to uh do your comment, talk to me, I'm very happy. Play the tapes for you of the of the officials, including that former superintendent, actually lying, saying that they had uh. Saying that they had uh. Wouldn't change anything, the teachers.
Uh correspondence?
Yes, ma'am. Uh we have a letter from a citizen who is a veteran and he wanted to congratulate the administration. On the wonderful uh Veterans Day programs, including the food that was provided and the music. And ceremonial aspect of Veterans Day that uh was held at the middle school as well as the high school and uh good for. I'll pass this round.
Thank you. All right, um me opt to the me um to the meeting minutes, uh we'd like a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November eleven, please.
So move.
We're first and second, any discussion on this minute? Here and now, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor. Any opposed? No, I mean, abstentions, I see abstention. We have Jordan and. All right, thank you. Now, moving on to the, what we've all been waiting for, policies. First reading of the animal policy, live animals in the classroom. I leave in Chris.
I'll start a little bit, yeah. So this evening, the policy committee just met. And we have been looking at there is policies from cave and from end field. And made the decision that we uh were going to go with caves policy. For um live animals in the classroom. So we have deliberated and talked about it, this policy that. Is coming forth to the this Board of Education for the first reading. Combines a policy statement and what they would consider regulations, but removing the regulations for the committee's request. To uh enhance the policy, so it's more specific. Um this policy was sent to um all Board of Education members. They take a look, the first reading gives the opportunity for um board members to take a look at it and certainly ask questions. Um between the first and second reading is when this particular policy will be available. Um to parents and staff and administration for their review. As well as taking a look at it by Dr. Fendilis, who is our school medical advisor. Um in addition to uh perhaps having our uh board attorney take a look at anything that's specific to animal welfare. To make sure that we cross our Ts and dot at ours. So then I'm going to um press it, there's anything left out. One thing that's very important, I'll just. Highlight it is, one aspect is that, um and there are many in here, but I'll just read one. That all requests to have animals in the classroom or on school property must be submitted to the principal in writing. Included in the request should be a description of the activity, type of animal, educational purpose or benefit. And length of activity and a plan for care of the animal.
Thank you, good. So you all should have a copy of this um as a first potential first reading. Um procedurally, if the board does accept this this evening as a first reading, um it's our intention to send out to the community tomorrow morning. Uh to start that solicitation of feedback, um some stakeholders in the community will be the parents. In some cases, students and and also with staff members. Um we would put like we would do with any first reading of a policy, we'd send that out um to receive some feedback. With the intention of by the next time the board would meet, they would gather that feedback. If you get any, typically we don't. If some board members have been here a while, you realize that when you send out a first reading, you often don't get um. A lot of feedback on particular policies. My gut is telling me you may get some in this case. Um and if depending upon what that feedback is, we certainly will show there'll be a conduit for. Interested uh parties to share their information with the board, with regards to the response of this first reading. Uh we would put an end date on that because it has to be prior to the next.
Um, we would put an end date on that because it has to be prior to the next board meeting, if the board is gonna consider this as a final reading at its next regular scheduled meeting. Um, but depending upon the feedback, I'm certainly sure that with the committee, you shared earlier this evening, if there's overwhelming feedback on it, I will communicate that with the policy committee. Um, so welcome aboard, Eric.
Thank you.
Um. Uh, again, you don't know until you send this stuff out. Um, but once we get that information back, we'll certainly keep the board apprised of that, so that you can make the necessary steps to finalize this policy. So I know it took a bit, but um, right now you have sort of a combination of all the existing language that it, that is out there in the atmosphere where it comes to live animals.
And and legal references.
And legal references.
Might I just suggest that, because there seems to be a lot of public interest in this, that the chairman, the superintendent might speak for just a moment on what cave is, I mean, refer to it. Sure, maybe not everyone knows, and cave's role in most public schools of Connecticut in terms of policy.
Yes, so cave and.
Association of Boards of Education.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, they are, there's basically two places that are the keepers of all things policy related in public schools. Either cave or an attorney. Ironically, cave's attorney is also the board's attorney, so usually when you're getting a legal reference, it's coming off in the same place. Um, that essentially is the organization that the old Z report uh public schools belongs to. And ninety percent of board policies that exist in the state of Connecticut either run through cave or shipment in Goodwin, which is also your attorney as well. Um, so none of this was sort of reinvention of the wheel. Um, this was more what best practices were out there. It just so happens that we here didn't have a specific policy. If this goes for, again, this isn't final, this is a first reading. Um, I've spoken with many parents and said, once, I I couldn't share any drafts because it has to get out of the policy committee to you guys. Once it gets to you as a first reading, we can then share that out with families um and interested parties, whether it be students and their staff members. Solicit, there'll be an opportunity for folks to solicit their feedback on it. And then that feedback will be shared with the policy committee and or the board, depending upon the purview of both um to ultimately make a final decision on what the final reading and adoption of a policy would be.
And I was just gonna add that, actually, um, I've worked very closely with the Connecticut Association for Boards of Education in terms of recruiting their policy chair. So um that's essential, and they give us some model policies to look at, and then we can decide if they're a better fit for their work. Um, and how that works. Yeah.
Good. Um, just a couple of comments. Um, it does refer to seeing eye service, service dogs. Uh, we have a policy on service dogs, so shouldn't this just refer people to that policy rather than?
Well, in your, in your drive, there is an updated version of a hard copy you had based on a few minor tweaks that happened in the policy meeting. It was updated in real time, so when you get to your shared drive, you should have the most up to date policy.
Okay, so that's gonna remove it from the shared drive.
Have her take that off, sure. That just, we, it changed between the previous meeting and by the time we got.
I was gonna say that on the bottom, it says CF six one, six three, K three two, and that's been on here. That was sent originally, so it's press reference.
Okay, service sound, yes. Um, but that number is a cave number. It's not a, it's not a Board of Education number, and that was my other comment, because this is really a um a literal edit of the cave policy, and so before it's sent to parents, I would, I I I don't know what the practice is, but I would have assumed this would have been formatted so that it, because previous first readings we've had have been formatted similar to our other policies with some, with the, you know, blue typing in there for some changes, but this isn't formatted the way our policies are. It's literally cave's policy.
Doesn't say draft on it yet either. Um, that's because it was just approved through committee to you for this evening.
Okay.
So before it goes out.
It will have those.
More like a typical, I'd say, for public schools policy.
Good.
But this was a living, breathing document up until about an hour and a half.
Okay, great. And I do, I, I support the, the bullet that you called out, Eileen, about that it's um uh animals' presence in the classroom are tied to learning objectives and um safety practices are in place, so um, and that there's a broad communication around um knowing what, what, what that is. So I think you've done a nice job, maybe you've done a nice job in pulling this together.
Any comments?
I have a question. Um. When it talks about having to do with the principal in writing, what if the principal says no? Is there an opportunity for teachers to come back again and re-ask, or if they disagree with the reason why it's no, can they then, is there an escalation policy if there's not agreement between the teacher and the principal?
It's your appeal process.
An appeal process? Um, as it's written now, no. The law doesn't exist, but it doesn't prohibit you from creating one. I mean, I think ultimately, it's a board policy, so if you want someone to appeal to you, have that right. But typically, it would start at the administration level. Um, and then, and if you see with the, their, the requirements for their requests are pretty well laid out as far as, you know, what the activity would be, the type of animal, the purpose, the benefit, the length. Uh, and then obviously gets into more specifics when it comes to the safety of, obviously, our students, the safety of the actual animal. Um. So I, I don't think you know, in my experience, having a policy like this in my previous life, um. It never escalated to that, but I can't, you know, never say that. So you can certainly take that into consideration once, if that's an opinion of this, of the members of the board before you may file it out.
Yeah, three months on this one.
My thing, my question is that, once this is adopted, then to bring animals back into the classroom, this is the prescription, is all. And so that's something, you know, that um your parents will have seen, so they can anticipate getting this kind of correspondence um in terms of acknowledgement from the school administrator.
Names of policy. Mary Kay, I, I, I know this is a policy. I'm assuming that there will be administrative procedures that will get written up that principals could follow. I mean, will that, and will that, will those have more details around appeals, or is this it? You know, that this is. How does, how does that? How's that?
As it stands right now, was the part of the conversation was mixing administrative regulations and the policy, so it was the decision of the committee to incorporate all of that into the policy. That, that's how it was standing.
Okay, so, so one of my comments then is, is in the set, first section that Eileen read about requests, it's not, it's not clear that that is an annual thing, or, you know, I could read that and say, I'm, I'm a fourth grade teacher, I'm applying to have a parakeet in my room for the next
But you have to have.
decade.
But it says, I have to tie your learning objective.
Sure, sure, but.
And what's the duration? And so like, if you say, I'm gonna do it for the next ten years, the principal would say, well, I don't find that acceptable in support of the learning objectives you identified, or they could say, yes, I do find that acceptable, and so.
So we're just gonna leave that as the teacher will identify the timeframe and.
Does it like the.
Like that activity.
Yeah, but, but can that length go beyond a single school year? I, I mean, just.
That would all be part of the request. Someone's just said, I wanna bring a parakeet forever.
Yeah.
That would be part of the request and the consideration.
That makes sense. Joe.
Well, I wonder if adding the word annual might set the tone annually applied, right? Um, but back to Jordan's other point, generally speaking, if a parent doesn't agree with my decision, it's an automatic escalation of the superintendent, so I don't know is if we need a statement and policy about that, because it's, it's, it's the way schools operate, so I wouldn't wanna add that to one policy. Trying to keep that secret. That's what's gonna happen.
Jane. I guess, uh, kind of to Mary Kay's, um, let, let's say the fourth grade teacher has a parakeet and it's there for three months every year, or three months or a month for whatever curriculum there is. Um, that teacher would have to come each year and say, hey, in the month of March, I wanna have the parakeet to learn about birds. Is that, is that kind of what we're saying, that they have to come each year to say, I wanna bring my, you know, pet parakeet in?
Anytime they have a mammal in the classroom.
Yeah. Okay, well, well, so, so they, so just like we approve the, the things, but if you want, but if, if it's gonna be um, I'm just trying to figure out if we can have a pet from like the beginning of school until the end of school.
So I think that's, that's the difference is, people are referring to it as pets. It's a live animal in the classroom. It's a, that's the policy, is a policy around live animals in the classroom, not around pets in the classroom. And so I think that's a distinction. That's important for people to realize, that yet that the presumption is that we're having a classroom pet. It's the it's a live animal in the classroom.
Yeah, right, and I, I guess that, that's, you know. If, when we talk about the timeframe, and I guess it's up to the principal, then if, if the teacher thinks it's a good example for, you know, to have a pet that comes in in the beginning of the year, mid-September or whatever, and is there until the end of the school year and ties it to curriculum, that's at the discretion of the principal to say yes or no. And, and how often that pet, or sorry, live animal travels to and from the school, and how often it has a sleepover. You know, that's the, that's the other thing that, you know, does the pet go home every night, or, you know, is that at the discretion of the, of the principal?
Yeah, that's also, I thought, H two.
Oh, sorry.
As far as the plan of care for the. And so is it living here when we're not open? Uh, those. I.
Okay. I, just one other comment to make about uh educational purpose and benefit that I'm my assumption is that that purpose and benefit can be academic, for academic learning, but also for social emotional learning.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
We do not specifically say academic.
Yeah.
I have two more quick questions.
Jordan.
Uh, it says, no animals will be allowed prearranged in the facility. Are we defining the facility as school or the classroom?
Both, but typically classroom, that's usually where we see it, but we'll just let the animal run around. For the safety of the animal, everyone else around it.
So the idea is that the animal would stay in its cage the vast majority of the time, besides cleaning or educational purposes. Um, and then does the principal, do they need any support determining if the plan of care provided to them makes sense for that particular animal, if they're not familiar with that animal?
I think this gives them the opportunity to ask more questions about that they're unfamiliar with that particular type of animal, right? So if there was a therapy dog, somebody might be more familiar, because they have the same breed of dog animal. Maybe an animal that they're not familiar with, that they would allow them to engage in that conversation again.
But. Yeah. But Jack.
I just was hearing the conversation about live animals versus pets. I believe this is about pets in the classroom, not live animals, correct? Because live animals are in science classrooms that are part of curriculum, and they do, they are not part of this policy.
Live, uh, curriculum, live, and we had this discussion in the committee.
Correct.
I used the wrong.
So we.
Wrong foot. If there are live animals as part of, that's already embedded in the curriculum, that is not is, that is not referenced in here. That's already embedded. That's already approved, because we as a district are sponsoring that.
Correct.
Yeah.
So this really is what classroom pets.
Live animals that we don't own.
Yeah, because live animals are, like you said, actively part of a lot of like, don't fall into this policy.
Okay, any further questions on this policy? All right, that it will, as.
What would you like in terms of a motion?
I, I don't need a motion.
We don't need.
I don't think it's a second right now, because Chris is now, we, we have sort of consensus, we've all asked the questions. Chris, as you said, he will send it out to the community first thing in the morning, and then we'll look for feedback and then take that feedback and make any further changes or adjustments if we see anything fit. And then it'll come back at our next meeting in two weeks for a final approval, and that's what we'll need a vote. Okay? All good? Thank you, everybody, for your feedback on that. So, um. Really, listen, first of all, I wanna thank everybody. We typically do not have meetings Thanksgiving week. Um, this was, uh, in huge circumstance. And uh, so thank you for taking up some of the size, but that's all right. No, thank you. Thank you for taking time out of this holiday week to uh to get all this work done. Um, reminders, they're in front of you. Um, I just wanted to add a couple. November tenth is when we have our leadership meeting with our attorney to. December tenth, I'm sorry, that's at six P M. And then December eleventh is a band concert in the high school at seven P M. Um. So happy Thanksgiving to all. Hope it's rest peaceful, enjoyable. Were you stretching hands? Um, thank you, yeah, for your support, and I really truly appreciate it. May I ask, you like a motion to the firm?
Are we gonna get an updated version of this?
Yes, you will.
I'll send it.
Yes, you will.
Did, did you motion?
Thank you.
I didn't.
I will now. We adjourn. Second. Okay, thank you. Do we need a vote? Yeah, I've just, just making a few. And all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, hi.
Hi, thank you unanimous. Thank you so much.
Regular board meeting on the ninth, and it's special one.
I'm thinking. Oh, that was the other, we did wanna ask to come and take a photo of this new board on the ninth. So um, I've been asked if we could perhaps come fifteen minutes early, the quarter of seven. If the, does that work?
Well, I was gonna say, if we have additional comments to the policy, will the policy meeting, well, you can have that anytime. But that's the, on the night. Okay.
And was the policy will get to the next board meeting agenda?
Yes.
That's our hope.
Typically, they'll go to read the following meeting, but and there's certainly a public input, but maybe. That I told you.
Who follows all the public input?
Usually it comes to me and or the, it'll go to you.
Yeah.
Um, but as I said, very, very random, we get any feedback on or policy, I would put the communication that we're asking, and this was a request the committee made,[1791.48]